To this joint special city council and finance advisory board meeting this Tuesday, May 27. So, excuse me just one moment because I forgot my glasses and I can't see a thing. No, I have some, I just have to grab them, okay. We will begin this meeting, excuse me, with the land acknowledgement. The island or the land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with public comment this evening pursuant to the Brown Act, section 54954, the public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on the items that are listed on the special meeting agenda. Public comment will be taken following the presentation of the special agenda item. Pursuant to city resolution 2011-22, city council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. And forgive me, I didn't even welcome you. Welcome, we're glad you're all here, thanks for being here. And with that, we'll turn it over to Director Millar.
Mayor Aldula.
Oh, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Bergel. Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Malden.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Finance member Carol Mays. James Clor.
Here.
Dave Paris.
President.
Thank you.
NTU Director Millar.
Good evening. So, this is the first study session for the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget. This year, we decided to do a joint meeting with the city council and the finance advisory committee. We've also invited the departments to come and speak on behalf of their budget. They're here to answer any questions, it doesn't have to be related to their budget, just FYI. So, tonight's presentation is really a big picture overview of the fiscal year 2526 budget. We're gonna look at the general fund in a little more detail than our other major funds. We're gonna look at revenues.
Turn the video and audio on.
Okay.
I apologize.
On Zoom?
Yeah. Our apologies to Zoom, we're ready to go now, we'll restart, thank you.
So, tonight's presentation is on the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget. We'll begin by looking at general fund revenues, followed by expenditures. And then the third section, we'll look at departmental budgets, including position changes and division budgets. So, starting with section one, general fund revenues. So, the makeup of the general fund is represented on that pie chart. The majority of general fund revenues come from one source, and there's really two other material sources. That includes taxes, intergovernmental revenues, and charges for services. So, we'll begin at the bottom line, oh, I'm sorry. We'll start at the top, taxes. So, this is by far the largest category of revenues in the general fund. Overall, we're expecting very little growth in this category. By packaging everything together, you somewhat hide some of the different trends we're seeing with these different tax revenues. If you notice, our sales tax is projected to go down next fiscal year from where we began in 2425. But property tax is showing a fairly large jump. This is the combination of assessed values going up, as well as more monies coming from the successor agency as those debts are getting paid off. Just to remind everybody what's happening with sales tax. With Measure H, we saw a large increase in fiscal year 2122 when the, when that began the first year of Measure H dollars. Since then, or I'm sorry, I just want to point out this little red bar. The top of that 2425 bar is where we started the year, what we estimated to be, what, to be total revenues for 2425. And then the blue bar represents the most up-to-date forecast for this current fiscal year. So, a lot of times what happens is we begin the year with this estimate, we get our estimates from HDL. They are professionals when it comes to economic forecasts. Recently, what we're seeing is that at the beginning of the year, they give us this estimate, and then during the year, we've been seeing a lot of downgrades. So, that red bar just shows you where we thought we would be versus where we are today. But overall, the trend has not been good for sales tax. Since fiscal year 2122, we've seen a decrease of about $1.2 million in this, in these line items. The next large category is TOT, or transient occupancy tax. So, the adopted budget for fiscal year 2425 estimated about $3.3 million in revenue, based on the actuals from fiscal year 2324. I lowered that budget by about $50,000. Last fiscal year, we saw about $3.25 million come in in TOT. So, we're trying to take the conservative approach and to assume no growth in this category. Looks like a, so charges for services, so this is another significant category of revenue. For most of these line items, it's pretty much status quo. The one large increase that we're estimating is from zoo revenues. Based on last year's numbers, I think I underestimated zoo revenue. I put about 1.8 in the current budget. Last year, we received about 1.9 million, or a little bit over 1.9, so that, most of that increase of $220,000 comes from the increased forecast for zoo revenues. Intergovernmental, so this is looking like it's very much down. That's really misleading because a big chunk of that revenue in fiscal year 2425 was reimbursement for the activities from Cape &amp; Care. During the fiscal year, we isolated Cape &amp; Care and we put them into a new fund, therefore those revenues will follow Cape &amp; Care. So, even though that's showing a big decrease of $1 million, that's because the revenue didn't go away, but it shifted to another fund. If I take out intergovernmental revenue to make it more apples to apples, you can see the bottom line is about a 1% growth in overall general fund revenues. Next, we'll look at expenditures. So, again, we have many different expenditure categories, but it's really only a few of them that end up capturing the entire budget. That includes personnel, outside services, cost allocation and transfers. Outside services, typically, these are monies that we spend on consultants or for electric bills. But the one outlier is our commitment to the Humboldt Bay Fire GPA. For fiscal year 2526, this makes up about 80 to 90% of that category, or that slice of pie. Cost allocation, so what that is, it's essentially overhead. So, certain departments like IT and finance and human resources, we charge those services out to the different departments from another fund, and they come through the department's budget as the cost allocation accounts. And then transfers, transfers are the monies that we transfer over for different projects, as well as a small subsidy for the harbor fund. So, again, with the changes that occurred during the fiscal year of moving the Cape &amp; Care operations out of the general fund, that's somewhat skewed the numbers. When we go back and we compare ourselves to the beginning of fiscal year 2425, what we're showing in the budget is a decrease in overall expenditures, and that's mainly because we shifted those expenses out to another fund. I've gone ahead and adjusted the numbers, so it's more apples to apples. So, you can see that the true bottom line is showing an increase of about 2%. A lot of the increase next fiscal year comes from personnel or salaries and benefits. We adopted a couple new MOUs last fiscal year. In both of those MOUs, we have COLAs of 3%. So, essentially, every employee will receive at least a 3% increase, and that's what's really driving that cost in that category. Outside services, a very similar thing as personnel because of the Humboldt Bay Fire GPA. So, we estimate costs to increase at the GPA by about 3% to reflect an increase in pay. So, that's why you see this category growing at a similar rate as personnel. Cost allocation, so this, again, is that overhead you see from finance, risk management, IT. Overall, these cost centers were relatively flat. The one exception is risk management, and I'll get into that later on. Debt service, so we have a couple leases for fire apparatus. We are gonna, or this fiscal year 2425, we paid off one of the two leases. So, next year, we only have one lease for the flatter truck, and that's why that category is going down. And then transfers, again, these are the monies that we transfer over for street projects, for facility projects, and $175,000 goes to the harbor fund. So, looking at the bottom line, when we compare revenues to expenditures, in fiscal year 2425, we did show a deficit. We still expect a deficit in fiscal year 2526, but that has improved by close to $400,000. Just because we show a deficit in the budget doesn't mean that always happens. A lot of times, by the time we get to June, we haven't spent everything that's in the budget, that's fairly typical. If you look at our financial statements, we tend to budget conservatively, meaning that we typically show the worst-case scenario, so that if there are surprises, those surprises are improvements, not things that have gone the other direction. So, next, we'll move into departmental budgets. This is, this, again, is a zoomed-out look at department operations. So, I'll begin with our largest department, the police. So, beginning with their positions, so during, or when we adopted fiscal year 2425 budget, we started with 78.7 FTEs. During the mid-year process, we did not adjust positions at police. And again, for fiscal year 2526, we have not adjusted any of the position lists, whether that's changing a title or adding or taking away FTEs. At the top, we have enforcement, that includes our police officers, our police sergeants. We're estimating growth to be about 4.5%. That includes the COLA that's gonna be implemented in July. Then communications, communications is showing a large decrease from budget to budget. There's actually not a large decrease happening. I made an error last fiscal year, and I overestimated their budget. So, that bottom, or that new line at the bottom shows you what it should have been. So, in reality, even though I'm trying to keep it apples to apples by starting with the adopted budget and comparing it to the proposed budget, in this case, at mid-year, I realized that I overestimated that budget. So, overall, communications is set to increase about 8% next fiscal year. The next department is development services. So, their FTEs are decreasing for next year's budget. This is because we are removing a code enforcement officer position and a building inspector position. We are also reclassifying a admin position for a regular part-time planner. Therefore, you see a reduction in the FTEs by about 2.3. When looking at their budget, you can see that planning is going up by about 6.6%, and code enforcement is going down by over 17%, and that reflux, or reflects the decrease in positions in that division. In the building fund, the building department, their budget is relatively flat. They did not ask for anything in addition to what they had last fiscal year. Even though their inspector position went away, it wasn't funded last year, and therefore that's why you don't see the decrease in fiscal year 2526. Our next department is community services. So, community services started the year with 51.8 FTEs. At the mid-year, we added a regular part-time maintenance worker, so that increased their RPTs by .7. And then for fiscal year 2526, we are proposing to change a preschool teacher RPT to a full-time preschool teacher. And that, therefore, that's why you see that one position increase from fiscal year to fiscal year. When looking at their budgets by division, you can see there's some that are growing, some that are shrinking. When looking at the Adorni Adult Recreation and Youth Recreation, these budgets are decreasing because of a large pullback in temp salaries. This won't affect their operations. We've looked back at the last few fiscal years, at their projections for temp salaries, and we've noticed that they've been a little bit too high for what they need. So, the reason that their budgets are decreasing overall is because of that pullback in temp salaries, but that shouldn't affect any of their operations. In parks, you're seeing that increase due to that additional RPT, as well as some monies for outside services for landscaping. And then in the zoo, we also decreased their temp salaries, but we've increased other line items such as animal food and maintenance that has to do with the canopy walk. Over in Fund 530, the harbor fund, community services has harbor maintenance and the Werfinger operation. Overall, this fund is poised to grow about 5.6%, which is around the average that we're seeing due to the COLAs and due to the cost allocation. And then finally, Fund 660 is the facility maintenance fund overseen by community services. And again, your typical growth rate that we're seeing for fiscal year 2526. During the fiscal year, we made another major change to how we operate, and that was when we split apart Public Works. We essentially took engineering or that function out of Public Works and made it its own department. So, I was able to take those FTEs from last year's budget and to separate what would be engineering versus other Public Works division, or, yeah, other Public Works divisions. So, overall, engineering is not seeing any changes to their total FTE count, but they did swap a special project manager for just a regular project manager. So, you'll see the effects of that when I go through their different budgets. Starting with the general fund, so overall, engineering is set to decrease slightly next fiscal year, and that reflects the change in the types of positions they have. In the water fund, engineering is set to grow about 2%. And then in the wastewater fund, about 2.5%. Next, we have Public Works. So, it's the same department, just without engineering, and I forgot to add that code enforcement was previously in the Public Works department, and that's been transferred out to development services. So, again, Public Works is showing no growth in positions. They did adjust the titles a little bit, and overall showed a reduction in next year's budget. A lot of the, or at least in the general fund, we're seeing a reduction. If you notice, the EOC, or Emergency Operation Center Division, that's going down by quite a bit. That's not because we're defunding that division, but we're reallocating a position dedicated to the EOC. They're getting, their costs shared with the water and wastewater fund. In streets, right now, we have one less position for a maintenance worker. I believe that one of the maintenance workers moved over to either water or wastewater. In the water fund, Public Works is looking at about 10% growth. And then in the wastewater fund, about 4% growth. Public Works also oversees our equipment operations fund. This is the fund where we budget for our vehicle fleet. So, the reduction in their budget is mainly due to the capital outlay accounts that we use to purchase vehicles. Over the past couple years, we've made large purchases for both police vehicles and utility vehicles. So, next year, we are planning somewhat of a slowdown in that category. This next chart, it doesn't show you one department, it really shows you the administrative function that comes through in those cost allocation accounts. That includes city administration. This was previously city clerk and city manager. We combined their positions into one list. It also includes city attorney, finance, human resources, and economic development. Not much change to the FTE count. I will point out that finance is going down one position, and city administration is going up one position, but that is because we're moving a position from finance to work in city administration. This position will help with the website and other, you know, web-based content, and, as well as our Sequoia Park Zoo website and the Visit Eureka website. In economic development, we are reducing FTEs by one position, and we are changing one of the titles to a higher title of project manager. So, overall, in this fund, we're expecting a decrease in the overall budget. I will point out that the city clerk is going up by quite a bit. That reflects that position being moved from finance to city administration. And then city attorney is showing a large decrease. That doesn't reflect any changes to their operation. Right now, we have a city attorney via contract. The city attorney's 2425 budget had enough outside services monies to capture that contract. So, what this is showing is a reflection of the decrease in salaries and benefits, but no change to their overall operation. Economic development is showing an increase despite losing that one position. The reason for that is that in the Cape Division, we have an employee that's dedicated to doing video production. Essentially, this person doesn't just work for Cape during the fiscal year, they work for all departments. So, for now, we've moved the funding for that position over to Fund 650 into economic development. This is another fund that I include under general admin. This has to do with the monies that we pay for different insurance products, specifically for liability insurance, property insurance, and workers' comp. This is one area where we're anticipating a large increase by over $700,000 next year. The city works with an agency called CIRA. This is a group of municipalities that work together to buy insurance products. CIRA does their best to keep costs down, but between property insurance and workers' comp, we continue to see those costs go up year over year. Unfortunately, between 2425 and 2526, we are witnessing over a 20% increase. These costs get reflected in every department's budget. Next, we have IT. So, during the fiscal year, IT added a regular part-time position, so they went from 5 to 5.7 FTEs. Looking at their total budget, they're expected to grow about 8.5%. That's a little more than average because of that additional RPT. And then finally, we have Cape &amp; Care. Cape &amp; Care are fairly unique operations for the city. Cape is actually under the finance department, and Care under the city manager's department. What makes these operations unique is that they don't reflect services that the city historically has provided. They're essentially new services that are focused on, you know, social services or mental health. Because they work in these categories, we have identified numerous different outside funding sources to pay for these operations. So, some of these positions are permanent, and some of them are limited term due to the source of funding that is provided to fund these positions. So, looking at the full-time equivalent permanent positions, overall, Cape is going down one position next fiscal year. This position was, has not been filled in previous years, so we decided just to remove it. And then Care is staying at one FTE. When we look at those limited-term FTEs, you can see that Cape has added another FTE funded by outside dollars, and Care is continuing into 2526 with six outside-funded positions. Again, this was a little bit hard to compare because Cape &amp; Care were under the same budget starting in 2425, and this year, being, being in a new fund, we also separated out the two divisions. Overall, they're growing by over 17%, which, the bad news is that's more money for us to spend, but the good news is that we're using outside dollars, specifically grant monies, to pay for all of these increases. Again, I didn't have anything to compare Care to for last fiscal years, so it's best just to look at the bottom line when we're comparing growth in these categories. So, that concludes tonight's presentation. So, we will have some additional budget meetings for the city council, that includes June 17th. That's when we'll return with the adopted budget for approval. And then with the finance advisory committee, I believe we have a meeting scheduled for June 11th to go over some additional information that was presented to the city council earlier in the month. But for the next presentation, I will focus on fund balance, and then I will give an update about the CalPERS Fresh Start option. And then I will give an update about the CalPERS fresh start, um, option.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, you started off with, you know, anticipating, uh, an increase in tax revenue, even though, um, projections are down. And so I was just kind of curious why you think there will still be an increase? Is it just sort of general, uh, costs are going up?
Um, so the reason for the increase is with property tax, um, it would be rare to ever see property tax revenues go down. Cause they're based off of the purchase price of the house. Uh, there was an exception when we, during the 2008 event, um, the assessor did adjust prices and that relieved people of property tax, but also hurt the city's revenues. Uh, but since then, um, as we see more transactions, um, in real estate, uh, that typically results in a higher assessed value because the sale price is usually higher than what it was purchased for. So because of that reason and because, um, it's held constant at 1% of the sale price, uh, we should expect property taxes to always grow. Uh, maybe not dramatically, but they'll continue to, to, uh, trend upwards. And because of the increase from just the, the natural, um, turnover of homes as well as getting more money back from the successor agency because we're paying down those debts, um, that increase of over half a million dollars is covering up the fact that our sales tax revenues are actually, um, expected to go down next year.
Thank you. Let's see. I saw in the budget you provided, I don't know if we'll talk about this at a future meeting and if so I can wait, but on page 78, um, the, the housing trust, there's nothing designated for fiscal year, for the next fiscal year. Is that, um, because we're not continuing to add money to that or?
Uh, we're still waiting on the results of the NOFA that we applied for.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, once, uh, if awarded, we would come back to council and appropriate funds at that time.
Okay. Wasn't there some conversation, uh, about a percentage of the T O T, uh, for, uh, specifically, um, V R B O kinds of things to be part of the housing trust?
Correct. Um, and we're still tracking, uh, those V D U T O T revenues. Uh, once we know, uh, the fate of the housing trust fund, uh, at that time, we will transfer over those monies into that fund.
Okay. And for now, are those included in the T O T?
Uh, in the T O T number right there? No, they're separate from that.
Okay, okay.
And we, just to add, uh, we've grossed in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, which is, uh, the amount, the threshold that we need to commit to for the housing trust fund.
Thank you. And then I was curious about the removing, removal of a position in code enforcement. Is that because, um, did we, did we have too many people? And is that related to the, you know, changes in implementing the vacancy ordinance or?
No, the original thought of that position was, uh, kind of a backfill position for E P D. And then we lost that position through attrition. And when the transfer went over and new management oversaw it, it was, the responsibilities were still able to be covered by that. And because E P D is getting close to fully staffed, that, that position was temporal when we brought it here.
Okay. And then if we were to, at some point, implement the vacancy ordinance or, you know, maybe it has to change again, would we need potentially another code enforcement type of position at that time or?
Potentially, um, I think something that would be more critical than that would be, um, full implementation of our, um, V D U and permitting program when we have to go out and start, um, inspecting, um, places. So at that point, we reconsider that as well.
And then that would potentially pay for that position?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I was curious about the part-time maintenance work in community services. Um, I feel like we could use a full-time position. Uh, is there a reason that it's only part-time?
So staffing wise, you know, over the last, I'd say four years, five years, we've almost doubled our maintenance staff in, in parks. Um, the previous year, council approved a full-time maintenance worker in Old Town. Um, that was an additional position. This position was a, um, temporary position that was being filled and decided that we'd make that an R P T position. That was done during mid-year at last year's, um, budget. I, from staff's perspective, that should be adequate. Um, we had a lot of staffing issues, both with workman's comp as well as folks being out. Um, we've lost a couple of employees. So there was a time during last fiscal year that we were, had all of the positions allocated, but there wasn't, um, folks filling those positions because of those issues. But we feel that, I think we have 10 full-time staff. When I was overseeing community services, I believe we had five. So there's been a significant increase over the last five years, um, in that department.
Okay.
And we'll have you ask one more and then we'll move on and come back to you.
Okay, okay. I can, I can pause an hour and you can come back to me.
Okay. Does anybody, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I was looking at page, uh, 56 in the opioid settlement money. I thought we had a yearly, we were going to get paid for like 20 years.
You are correct. And I think, um, City Attorney Black can maybe help with that. I know that the money is going towards Cape and Care currently, but.
So we, yes, we expect those monies to come in over the next decade, I believe. And Bob can, uh, fill in the gaps. Uh, the reason why I didn't plug any numbers into, uh, that fund yet is because it, we're still trying to figure out the timing of these payments. Uh, and everything we plan to use, uh, in the current fiscal year, we've already received. So that's in fund balance. And then for future monies, we're still working, because Cape and Care have so many outside funding sources, we're still kind of developing, uh, that budget and how much we're going to need from the opioid settlement. So eventually you will see numbers in there or you will see numbers in the Cape and Care fund, uh, as reimbursement for those activities.
Okay, uh, yeah, I don't know. Bob, we don't need to get into the weeds on that too much.
Well, I'll just say that it's true that, um, almost all the settlements, and I think there have been on the order of 12 to 15, um, maybe slightly more, uh, different settlements with different defendants. Almost all of them involve payment over time. But by and large, they're all front-loaded. So you get a much bigger hit in the first year or two. Uh, and then there is a smaller trail of settlements. Uh, the original ones, uh, were big ones with the distributors. And they did go out, I think it was 18 years, um, or maybe 20 years, including the first two, uh, payments that were made. Um, most of them don't go out that far. They're, they're shorter. Uh, but they are still, some portion of them, as a general rule, is still pending.
All right. Yeah, thank you. One, one more question. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, our strategy with these monies is to let it come in and, cause we kind of waited for a couple of years. So once we built, you know, a cushion, now we're starting to plan on how we use those monies just because of the volatility and just not, we don't get a lot of information about timing or in terms of receiving those funds.
Thank you. Um, one more quick question on the risk management. What are we going to do about, I mean, that's a significant increase. And I, I probably it's nothing we can do, but I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Bam.
Oh, no, not at all. Um, I serve on both the board and the executive committee. And Sarah is concerned, um, about the increase. Were, those were projected numbers. We don't even have our, um, final numbers until July 1st. So they were conservative. Hopefully they will come in less, but property, um, right now is a whole thing. And then every time we give raises, um, our workers' comp goes up by that much cause, because it's based on payroll. Um, and also in a number of, um, insurance products, payroll plays a role. So in a nutshell, that's it quickly.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe one more quick question. Um, Director Millar, what do you think about our, our debt service? Is it, it seems like we're, you know, as far as percentage of revenue, it seems like we're in pretty good shape right now, you know? I mean, we're not, we don't have a considerable amount of debt, I guess is my question.
Yeah, in fact leases aren't even considered to be true debt service just because they're, you know, they're, the timeframe or the term is so short. So when we're looking at bonds, they don't even, uh, we don't even report that we have debt because of the structure of that type of debt. So I would say the general fund, yeah, it's in a very good position to, uh, issue debt because it has none. And they, the, the rating agency looks at that. That's a big piece of it is both, do you have any current debt or current long-term obligations? As well as do you have any plans for future obligations? So I think this is a unique situation where, uh, the general fund typically doesn't do long-term debt, but because it's for facility improvements and because facilities have lives of, you know, 20 to 50 years, uh, a debt or a bond is very appropriate, uh, in terms of a way to finance those improvements.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. And thank you for the, uh, concise overview of this very much larger document. Something that just jumped out at me, I was curious about under, let's see. On page 228, under the housing programs, there's a, a 28.8% miscellaneous category. Can you, um, help enlighten what that might be?
Yeah, so miscellaneous in that fund, um, is going to capture monies we pay or it's going to capture like grants and contributions, uh, to other, um, agencies. And in that case, um, that would include, uh, the Betty Chin, uh, Women's Center as well as the Blue Angel Village. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was an increase when we opened up the, uh, Family and Children's Center across from Her Day Center, um, I believe of 25,000 or 20. Anyway, that was an increase as a part of that operations. And then we also increased it for, um, operations at, uh, Blue Angel Village as well. And that's coming from, um, redevelopment funds, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Issuing grants from the city to another agency is not, uh, a normal thing you see in a, a department's budget. So that's why it's in that miscellaneous category because there's so few line items that are dedicated to grants being issued, uh, for other agencies.
And I believe the total contribution to, um, their operations is 95,000 a year, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Um, is this available, um, by, in PDF form? There's several bar graphs where, uh, I can't tell what the heck's going on. And I was wondering if there'd be something I could mouse over.
It is available in PDF form, but you're looking at it?
Okay.
It's available online though, and you can zoom in online.
Yeah, we're having issues.
Thank you. Yeah, I was looking at it on paper, like, you know, these ones where it's like a hundred tiny little slices and I can't tell what's what's. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, little housekeeping, uh, if you want to discern between two things, they shouldn't be two different colors of blue. There's several things where it's like, this is blue and this is a slightly different shade of blue.
In the, these graphs in the document?
Yeah, it seems, um, you know, if the point is to be able to clock something visually quickly, you can't tell the difference between the colors.
I understand. Um, so we use the third party to, for this budgeting software. So we're limited in what we can control and what we don't control. So we're, they're slowly adding features and we're doing our best to, to use the tool to its full advantage. But sometimes things like colors are off limits. So we'll go back and look and see if we can. It, it's really meant to be an online tool and less of something that you would put in a document. So we're trying to, uh, create an hi, a hybrid, but it's challenging at times. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you. As a, as a matter of transparency, we want it to be as easy to understand as possible. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Uh, so, so going back a bit, you touched on the intergovernmental funding and it's not so much a loss as it is than it seems, a shift in funding to a different, uh, different department, as it were, at least as it relates to Care and some of the other programs.
Correct. And in that intergov- governmental, um, category, uh, it includes a line item for vehicle license fee in lieu, which it's labeled as intergovernmental because it comes from the state and it's over $3 million. So that's the majority of that category. So that's why that, taking out that, um, line item for, um, grant reimbursements for Cape and Care, uh, was so dramatic. Cause typically it's around three, three million per year. But because of Cape and Care bringing in this outside money, that's why, uh, over the past few years, that category has gone up by quite a bit.
Okay. And so then that would explain perhaps the, at, at least what might be viewed as a drastic increase in the, in the city manager's office, because that's where this particular program is going to be housed, correct?
Part of the program.
Part of the, yeah.
Yeah, Care is, uh, underneath the city managers or city admin currently under this new budget here. It's under city admin. Um, Cape went over to, uh, finance.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Um, and then something that I think was touched on briefly by Councilmember Castellano, uh, our vacancy program, where are we with that currently? Not that I'm looking for it as a source of revenue, but just more where is it in the context of where things are?
Yeah, there was, um, we're, uh, City Attorney Luna, former City Attorney Luna, uh, updated, um, City Attorney Black and Deputy City Attorney, um, uh, Davis on this. Um, there was pending legislation and there were kind of strategizing on what the next move was. There should be something, um, either coming back as a report or a presentation to demonstrate the status of it or something for action, but, um, they're still in those discussions right now.
Okay, thank you. And then I think it's on page 24. Uh, the other financing sources, uh, the revenue category for all city funds is looking at a hundred and 100.1% increase. And so I'm curious if there's some sort of breakdown or explanation for how it goes from, yeah, 9.4 to 18.8.
Yes, um, so, and it's hard when you collapse all the funds together and come up with these, the citywide numbers. They, um, so that, why that's growing, um, by so much is because we have, it's due to the wastewater and the bypass project. So with the water and wastewater fund, so we have the operations fund and we also have a, a C I P fund. So I like to separate the projects from the operation because the projects will make the numbers look really volatile. So what happens is, um, essentially, um, monies get shifted from the operations fund to the C I P fund. And, uh, next year, because we have a, essentially a $20 million project, that's why that, and let me explain further after this, but that's why that, that's such a large increase is because we're plugging in, uh, that bypass project of $20 million. Uh, in addition to that, um, other financing sources will also include, uh, bond proceeds. So if, and we anticipate a bond for the wastewater, uh, fund. So whenever you receive a bond, let's say you receive 10 million from bond proceeds, how you plug that into a budget would be other financing sources.
Okay. So that, yeah, that helps explain that then. That's kind of where my mind was. But I wanted to hear how you answered it because I can only speculate. Um, and, and then looking at the wastewater, uh, capital funds, um, then is that bond being included in the expenditure increase? Or because we're looking, going from, God, what is it? Uh, yeah, it's looking at almost a $21 million increase. So is that predicated on those, on that bond?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have at the moment. So thank you.
Go ahead. Um, Commissioner James Clur?
Yeah, I just had a question on the budget line item report. For the year-to-date activity, what For the year-to-date activity, what period is that through? Because the bottom of the report says it was ran on 5/20/25. Does that include all activity up to that date?
That is correct. Depending on the line item, that number is going to give you a true reflection of what was earned at, on 5/20/25. And mainly on your expenditure side. On the revenue side of things, there's always a delay in the general fund, especially with sales tax. We get our sales tax allocation essentially three months later because it takes time for businesses to submit returns and for the state to go through those returns. So if you looked at our sales tax revenue, you would say, whoa, they're really down. And that's because there's a big delay. If you're looking at the water fund and regular charges, that would be what we receive through water and sewer bills. And those have a 30-day delay. So that number is going to be pretty good, but not a true year-to-date. So I caught, I mean, you can look at the year-to-date column and in some cases that's going to give you a good estimate of what has been spent. But in some cases, because of that delay, it's not necessarily something that you should put too much thought in. It's really the, I would say, the proposed budget and the total budget are the better comparables.
Because there's a pretty big lag in, in revenue for the general fund, even if you take into account like the three months, so you think it's just a timing issue. And by the time the fiscal year ends, we'll see that something close to what we budgeted for revenue coming in.
Yes, yeah, we don't close the books on the fiscal year until, or for fiscal year 24, 25. We go all the way through September before we close the books. A lot, or half of our property tax doesn't show up until July or August. And then our final sales tax allocation is going to be, or it's about September.
And then I had one other question, if that's okay. So in the wastewater fund, I was wondering why in the proposed budget, the pooled cash interest is so low? It goes from being like 125,000 to like 3,000 next year? And it doesn't seem like interest rates are falling off that fast? Or are we completing a bunch of the projects that those fee and LOU's are being held for?
Yeah, so I wouldn't expect it to go down that much. I think I just, those are some of the line items I don't like to budget too high because again, when they, I mean, our rates are still, or our investment rates are still high. So a lot of times I'm just using, keeping that out of the budget. So when that shows up, it's going to help with fund balance. Because it can't from, during the fiscal year, you know, at first we were earning about 5%. Today, that's a little bit under 4%. And, you know, by the time we're done with fiscal year 25, 26, interest rates could be back to 1 or 2%.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I had a question about, well, I have about 20, but about sales tax revenue. You were talking about that we have, did you say HDL? That gives the estimation, how long have we been using HDL?
At least since 2012, but I would have to guess that even a decade prior to that, they're kind of the standard for almost all municipalities when it comes to forecasting.
Yeah, okay. And one of the things you said was that you've been seeing it adjusted, adjustments come in. Are they adjusting up or adjusting down? In 2025, did they adjust up or down?
They're adjusting down.
In 2024, did they also need to adjust? Did they adjust up or down?
Yeah, it's since fiscal year 21, 22, it, they tend to be a little too rosy.
Yeah, I already knew the answer, but I just thought it was important for everybody to publicly hear that because I don't think everybody else is going to want to swim through 136-page PDFs that are on our site. And I just wanted to make sure that that was heard by the rest of the council too, that they're adjusting down. Have you been tracking by what percentage they're needing to be adjusted down each year? How far off they've been in their projections?
Don't track the difference. It's, I anticipated, but I, so I, even though when I, I try to hold back expenditures, I don't try to challenge their numbers because I feel like that's, they're still the expert. And I think they're, the way they do it is they're looking at state trends. And those, when you're, if you're a metro area, like their analysis, I think is going to be, they're going to see a lot less volatility.
Right.
When you're a, a bigger city. When you're dealing with a city that's far away from any metro on the North Coast, they're going to, there's going to be more volatility because I don't, you know, they're using these averages from across the state and they're not going to capture low, things that are happening locally.
Yeah.
I can tell when it's, or, you know, my gut tells me when they're too rosy, but it's never been to the extent where I feel the need to adjust the numbers. They've actually been wrong in the other direction in the past. During COVID, they projected a 15% decrease in sales tax revenue. And that following year, we saw a record sales tax revenues. So it's, it's hard to.
I appreciate that. The reason why I wanted to talk about that is I wanted to make the point that we've been declining since late 2021. And I stand by what I said and I'm going to continue to say the recession came here earlier and we're already in it here and we're already starting to feel it and it's starting to ripple. And I, I also have a concern about us, you know, putting any kind of faith or stock in sales tax revenues. And one of the reasons is because what they're seeing with housing prices, foreclosures that are starting and then a decrease in housing sales, about a 7% decrease just in the last year here. So I just, first I want to say thank you because I feel like you do a really great job, Lane. But I, I, this is mainly just for us. I, I, I'm concerned because we're declining quarter over quarter and have been for a while. And I think we need to be making a plan for how we're going to make sure that we're steady through a recession that's already started here. That's my opinion on that, so I'm going to stop there. I do have questions, but I don't want to take up more time on that.
Councilmember Castellano? And then did any other members of the Finance Advisory Board have questions? Yeah, I could, okay. I didn't want to like take all the time. Let's see, I, thank you. I was curious, the parks, the outside services landscaping, is that, that's more affordable than hiring staff? Because it's kind of special projects or?
So it's been hard to figure out what that estimate's going to be from year to year, especially, we had a, a huge benefit for years with the swap crew, with the county as well as Cal Fire. Since COVID, Cal Fire hasn't been back. We've been trying to get that service back. We had a, a large contract with somebody to do more of our open space management with a lot more crews and take over things, get jobs done a lot quicker. We found a cheaper option to that, so we kind of kept it where it was previously just in case that other option doesn't pan out. Ideally, we get swap crews back. Swap crews were huge for us. They did a lot of the work that a lot of other consultants would not do. And so we're spending a lot of time with our staff doing that work that they used to do. But no, the amount that's in those services, I mean, we, we can look at that, but one person to do the, a big job like that, like we may have, you know, the dog park and you have all of that debris that's around it and stuff like that. That's basically our whole crew for a day to do that when we can hire somebody for, for a day at a, at a more cost-efficient way. But we are constantly looking at that. I mean, it's been a tough transition not having those services that we previously had and we're trying to nail that down.
Okay, thank you. I was curious with the, you know, the bond, maybe it won't be seen this year, but just in terms of like how that might play into facilities maintenance as we're kind of like undergoing construction and things like that. Will we need more people performing those duties or is that?
For the big projects, so City Hall, Municipal Auditorium, Operations, Operations Complex is going to be all.
It's its own thing.
It's its own thing. When we talk about here, I think the relocation part of it, I think we discussed about this a little bit. That's why we're kind of bringing in the Municipal Auditorium to potentially have a relocation spot for folks while City Hall is being done. I think a lot of that work's going to be preemptive to that. Right now, we're looking at digitizing. The majority of the space that's taken up at the Municipal Auditorium is documents, plans, documents, those type of things. So we're really trying to, I don't want to say clean house, but we're trying to figure out what we do need to keep and what's worth digitizing. It, it would be hugely efficient when we get fastest because right now when we get a PRA or we get a contractor that comes in and says, I want the building plans for this particular parcel, we're taking a staff member going down there, looking through all of these files, finding them and bringing them back up here. Digitizing that would be massive for us as far as not only Public Records Act requests, but also for just day-to-day operations and development and permitting and all of those things.
So Contract with Enterprise, is that still serving us for our fleet? Do you feel like that's, you like it? It's good?
Kelly, excuse me. Department Head Allen?
Welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, it's still serving its purpose and we have our July meeting with our account managers to look at the next 12 months. But yes, we are putting in new vehicles like EVs and it's working out well, yes.
Thanks. Those are all my questions.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I apologize, this was already asked. I just wanted to confirm and the Department for City Manager, the dramatic increase, that's because CARE is over there, is that right?
Correct, or yes.
Okay, yeah, I had somebody say, why is it 70-something percent, 78% or something like that? But it's CARE, right, entirely? Okay, and then I had, let me get over to City Attorney really quick. I just wanted to confirm that for City Attorney, that the difference in that is, well, actually, can I have you explain that? It's about 32% from the prior year, that's from contracts last year or?
So the large decrease is because now that we're under contract for attorney services, we don't need to fund that city attorney position. And because there was such a robust outside service or outside legal budget in the city attorney's office, is that that budget was enough to absorb the costs of the contract city attorney. So the, the decrease is because there's no longer that city attorney position. But it's.
I mean, there's no longer somebody in the position, not that there's no longer a position.
I'm sorry, so there's still a position in the budget, but it's not being funded because we're currently under contract. And that contract is being paid for through the outside services line item.
Okay, can you help me understand then why the proposed 20, proposed 2026 though is still lower than what the 2024 was?
Because we expected, because of that contract, we are essentially saving the city attorney's budget quite a bit of money.
I see, okay, so, but this is not that we're not budgeting for a full-time city attorney once Bob is done with his, or Attorney Black is done with his four-month stint?
Yeah, as long as we have that position list showing that a city attorney FTE, that means it's still in the budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Again, going back, I think we already covered the sales tax decline and the downgrades. And so I'm curious, because the general fund as it is, is looking at around, what, three, three-quarters? You know, almost point 750,000 almost for a deficit. And so are there any specific strategies we're looking at? Is this potentially ongoing? Are we going to look at reserves to help cover those type of things? Where are we at in this situation?
So the, the Calpers Fresh Start concept or option, the reason I'm proposing to, to do the fresh start is because we level, because between now and 2030, 31, we're expecting over a million dollars of increased unfunded liability payments. And if, what we can do is rather than go up this, you know, expenditure ramp, we can say, we can fresh start, meaning what they'll do is they'll make that schedule of payments flat. So we'll go up a little bit, but then we'll maintain a flat payment schedule out past 2030, 31. And when I reduce the, the degree of increase on that unfunded liability payment, then what I, what I'm doing essentially is I'm letting the revenue side or catch up. So I'm reducing the growth of the expenditure side and allowing, hopefully over time, sales ta- or not sales taxable, actually, sales tax, hopefully that increases over the next five years. And if I can get those rates to be in, in line, then we avoid having to go through reserves or to make cuts. So that's the option I'm going to start with. If we continue to see this trend where sales tax is going down year over year, then we might have to make or come up with another strategy. But I feel like we're, at least on this graph, we're starting to bottom out. And hopefully, once we find that bottom, we'll start to go back up. COVID did inspire a lot of taxable sales. So I think that peak kind of misled us, maybe we thought, or, sometimes it can give the impression that things are always going to go up like that. But I think if you zoomed out 10 years, you'd see that over time, the trend is going up. It's just in the last five years that we've experienced this boom and bust.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
I think Councilmember Fernandez and Contreras Deloche bring up good points about revenue and, and yeah, I think there's some potential for a recession. I think the budget's very sound and I appreciate you, you know, working with the numbers and giving us something that is, you know, decent and it's something that we can all live with. But I, I look at all these different categories like the Humboldt Bay operations, right? How do we generate revenue there so that we're not? And, and maybe ask the question is how, how much are we contributing to Humboldt Bay operations?
The Harbor Fund?
The Harbor Fund, sorry.
Roughly, or, I'm sorry, not roughly, 175,000 from the general fund. So it's not that much.
So it, it's changed significantly. I think it was 2017, 18. Anyway, we did an analysis of the Harbor Fund. A lot of the issues that we had were very longstanding. For decades, we were giving away our property at well below market rate. We were also, hey, we had a lot of bad leases and we had some issues with the allocation of funds and how we were paying for our harbor staff. The vast majority of our maintenance staff in Harbor are not at the marina doing marina work 100% of the time. So back then, when we did this analysis, we basically changed it. I mean, we were close to a million, weren't we subsidizing it back in the day? And so what we did is we changed the allocation so that, you know, when you're working on the, the trail, that's more of a general fund thing. And so we changed the proportion of which funds we're paying for them. So we didn't have 100% of our maintenance workers being paid from the operations funds. We think we took 30% of that and said it's general fund. So we did that and then we also analyzed all of our leases, all of our leases. There's a couple of them that are still pending since then that have been changed. And we've gotten more market rate. We consult with a commercial realtor, get the cost per square feet. And, you know, we've increased one of our leases by 33% over that year, I mean, over the years. And so it's gotten a lot better. We're still not where we need to be. It doesn't generate the revenue. If we were to raise the rates to where we were covering that 175, I don't think we would be very competitive. So if we changed our mortgage rates to what they should be or changed our facility rental rates to what they should be, I think we would push ourselves out of the market in that area. And so we're still trying to get back to the point where we're, we're updating those leases and making better. We are getting new leases. We're going for a lease right now with the Groves Association and Fisherman's Marketing Association. So we're, we're trying to get there. It's definitely gotten a lot better. The one thing that was similar to that was a building fund. And the building fund has completely turned around over the last five years and it's, it's in the black now.
No, I think staff have done a, a great job of, of making those funds more solvent. No, I think staff have done a, a great job of, of making those funds more solvent, you know, but long-term, right? I think of the parking fund, the harbor fund, like all these things that we got to figure out and make tougher decisions about How do we generate some more, given if sales tax continues to decline or something? Just to be thinking about those tough decisions, like how much can we move things up to generate revenue? To make those programs solvent and, and stay solvent. It's just a, a bigger thing for us to think about. But overall, it's a great budget and thank you for, for making it rosy.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we will open this, are there further questions? We will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none in the audience, I can't Z Zoom. No one back on Zoom? Okay, so we'll bring it back to council to receive this report. And how do we proceed with that? Do you want a motion or do we just receive the report? Receive the report. And then just another point of order, do we need to adjourn this meeting before our next one or do we just move forward? I got you. So now, excuse me, so would you first clarify that point for me?
Yes, we need to adjourn this joint meeting and then we will start our council meeting.
Thank you. And now I'll bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Castellano.
Sorry, I felt like that kid in elementary school for a second. Thank you. Two quick comments, you know, I, I do think I would like to see That part-time community service maintenance worker be full-time. And then also To what Councilmember Bauer brought up, that, that was on my list too in terms of, you know, I think every JPA, every municipal organization, Every nonprofit that we know of is seeing their insurance rates just continuing to like increase exponentially. And I do think that there should be some advocacy lobbying in terms of some legislative Changes around that and maybe how that works with like litigious, you know, the capacity for people to lawsuit And like thresholds around that. As, those are big, long-term things and for sure, like big industry investment and those things not changing. But I do think when we look at the cost to citizens, it's really important to start thinking about how Cities, how people start to make changes to that industry. Yeah, and, and so I do think it's something just to think about, like whether there are lobbyists working on this And we are participating in those efforts, whether that's to Cal Cities or, you know, with the county, I don't know. I don't know what it looks like, but I think that there needs to be big changes to that industry. And I know that we have a local representative who's also really interested in that sector. So something that I would love for us to have on our radar.
Councilmember Morton.
Uh, since we're talking about what we'd like. I, I see the digitizing of our records. I see that slowdown touching every department. And if it were possible to have a temporary employee to help with the actual act of that. I know we have some folks in-house that are working on organizing that effort. But if there was, if it was possible to hire somebody temporarily to just do the actual scans until it is done. The sooner that's done, the more smoothly everything's going to run all over.
Yes, we hire students during the summer. We've, I think this is our third summer to do that. We are also looking at an RFP that will do the larger, some consultant Or a person, a company to come in and pull those larger plans That we don't even have capacity for in our printers, printers to do it.
I mean, like physically larger.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so we're looking at all those things. And then you'll notice that there is a position change for, to a records coordinator In city attorney's office, basically a reclass. And that person is going to be really proficient at making these changes happen.
So. Great, I saw that and I was afraid she was going to be doing all the scanning herself.
Oh, no.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn this joint session of the city council finance advisory board. And we will take a short break and then come back. Thank you guys for being here.